We have public comment in the back of the room next to Ms. Blunt. There's a sign up sheet if you would like to make public comment. You will have three minutes to do so and remember that we do not allow personnel discussions during the public comment section. If you have your cell phones, if you would please silence those before we start. And I would like to recognize tonight we have a Boy Scout troop fifty-three from East Asheville. It was visiting with us tonight and they're led by Assistant Scout Master Michelle Emile. We want to welcome them. They are in the process of earning their Communications Merit Badge. And they chose to visit our board meeting tonight so they can share this with their counselor. I've also asked them that when our colors are presented by the INCA High School Junior ROTC, they're going to come up and lead our Pledge of Allegiance at that time. After we have the Pledge of Allegiance, the color guard is not going to be leading immediately. If you'll remain standing for our moment of silence. And after our moment of silence, if you will be seated, we have a little presentation to make with the ROTC program. So, thank you for bearing with us. And if you will stand, we'll have the INCA High School ROTC program come in.
Clear your head. Left, head. Freeze. Kelly.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if you'd join us in the moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Everyone, please be seated. Ms. Blunt?
Does this work? Technology's a wonderful thing. Folks, I'm Chief Deegan, I'm the ROTC instructor at the high school. We are very fortunate that at INCA and our local school, TC Rose, and we were identified this last year as being a distinguished unit with merit. Now, that's a, for us military type folks, that's a lot of positives. I would like to hear this kind of word spoke together. ROTC is a program designed to help youth discover the qualities of good citizenship in. This award that we received identifies us within the nation to be in the top four percent of all the schools across the nation. And so TC and we're very fortunate in our county, both schools that have ROTC Air Force programs at their high school, receive this award. So, at this time, I ask Chairman Reinhardt and Mr. Fabio and our new Corps Commander Ricky Hanna to please put our new banner on our flag.
All right.
Don't need to get in there and kill. Get a best picture.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right, folks, if you wouldn't mind standing while the colors leave.
Hold, hold. Right, head. Lower, heart.
Thank you very much. All right, next, I guess really first on our agenda is, let me back up just for a second and tell you that we did meet at five-thirty in closed session where we discussed personnel matters and some attorney-client privileged information also. And so here we are now, and with the approval of the agenda, I've been asked to remove three items from the consent agenda. That is, the intent to use race to the top funds to purchase the Discovery Education Science Techbooks and also the August 2nd, 2012 work session minutes and the August 2nd, 2012 open session minutes. That being said, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, could I ask for clarification to remove them or to move them somewhere else?
I'm sorry, to move them to the action agenda.
Okay.
I'm sorry if I was... So, we're just moving them off the consent agenda to the action agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as proposed by Chairman.
Is there a second? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Dr. Baldwin, Superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Minus the flight of the geese over Hominy Valley and minus the very unique early bomb threat at Reynolds High School, I want to say to the public that we just had an exceptional start. We talked to our principals last week and as I said to them, a term over the years that we tended to use for the starts of the school year has been a non-event. And the reason that's been said is when you go into these, to our classrooms and I think our central office has been out and about in all forty-two schools. I've had the pleasure of visiting some incredible elementary school classrooms. It really does seem like we just simply picked up from where we left off last spring. But I think that would be wrong to call it a non-event because what has happened over this summer to allow our start to be so smooth has been a lot of planning, a lot of dedicated effort with teachers, with other staff, with administrators, and in many cases, they volunteered their time to prepare a good start. So, I want to take my hat off to them and across this system, we've just seen some wonderful things as we begin the twelve-thirteen school year. We've taken a look at our ten-day numbers and we have to be careful now because technically, we really don't turn anything in until the twentieth day. That's the magic number, but this is an early look. And our total enrollment is at twenty-five thousand six hundred fifty-nine students. As compared to the tenth day last year, we're up over eighty-eight students in the school system. And in fact, if I had to look across the entire system, the Robertson District appears to show the most increase. All three elementary schools are up, including forty-two more students at ST's. I don't see Mr. Barber, he's still probably at work. Valley Springs Middle School has also increased by fifty-plus students. And the largest gain was, has been at Coontz Intermediate. Some of that, of course, has been, we did grant waivers for the initial year for students going to Kane Creek. But that's a considerably large increase. In fact, what we've now seen in terms of total numbers tenth day is that at Valley Springs, we're at eight-fourteen and at Evelyn, we're at eight-thirty-seven. So, both intermediate schools appear to be ahead out there. And they are certainly well-represented by students and staff. As the Board is aware, an environmental concern was raised regarding the building that we are currently in on a daily basis. For those of you that don't know, it houses our newcomers center. It also houses all of our central office staff. It represents the location of potentially our new STEM High School. And needless to say, any question that we receive regarding any campus in this school system, we're going to take very seriously. We are currently waiting the construction of a new monitoring well that is to be located in close proximity to our building. And once we have that in place, this, what they call a shallow well, that analysis of groundwater will give us additional information regarding what our environmental status is of the building. Now, the most recent release of information that we've shared came from analysis of what's called Monitoring Well Twenty-D. That's located right outside of our maintenance building, in proximity to the maintenance building. And all three sample analyses from this well came back as non-detect for contaminants. However, the Board has directed me at our last session, you have asked me to provide additional options for environmental testing. And I want to say to you that it's my intention to provide these to you in a board information session that will be open to you, the public, once we receive those results from the new monitoring well. And at this session, we will provide each one of you a historical timeline beginning in nineteen eighty-nine when the property was purchased, as well as all available documents and resources that we have in our possession. In reference to the history, though, I think it's important, I've said this several times, that throughout the twenty-three years we have been on this property, we have been on city water. We've been working closely throughout this entire time with State Dean or Office and we will include their recommendations as well as I come to you in that particular work session regarding the options that are available to us. As you are aware, our Hominy Valley Elementary School was recently featured by WLOS regarding a geese problem that we've actually had for about the last twelve years. As a result of that segment, we have become connected with Tank. And those of you that don't know who Tank is, he is an Australian shepherd and his owner is Mrs. Stimson. I don't see Tank and I don't think Miss Stimson's here tonight, Clark. I wish they were. In fact, Tank is trained as a, for lack of a better term, I'm going to say a geese chaser. And I believe his first encounter with the birds actually occurred this Tuesday evening. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Clark Wyatt to give you just a brief history, give the Board a brief history on the issue and bring you up today on Tank's performance. So, Clark, can you do that for us?
Sure. After our news event, we received several phone calls from different people with different ideas concerning our geese at Hominy Valley. And one of the persons that contacted us was Miss Stimson with her dog Tank. She gave us Tank's, all of his resume. I didn't know dogs had resumes, but this dog's got a huge resume. So, we decided to employ, after checking references, the Tank to help us up a piece. And like I said, the first visit, the geese weren't on the property, but he has been there Tuesday, chased the geese off back Wednesday, which was yesterday. Took care of the geese and we're constantly contacting with the school staff. So, when the geese show up, Tank shows up. So, hopefully it will create a better environment for our students.
Thank you, Clark. Do I have any questions?
Do you whistle for Tank?
I don't whistle for Tank, but he does have a one-hundred-yard call range. I know a lot about Tank, so he can hear his commander at a hundred yards, which is pretty funny.
Do they speak real low like sheepdog when you're telling a sheepdog what to do? Oh. You didn't watch?
Is this, did I not see, is that, that's not the same dog that I saw last night on the, or I think yesterday on the news at Lake Julian, or no, Lake Junealaska?
I don't know, they have worked.
Not the same dog?
I'm not sure. This dog has worked for the Asheville Country Club and some others.
Apparently, they employed another dog then. Same situation, Lake Junealaska was on the news last night.
What is the expected outcome from this? I know there's a certain, how much time does it take to do geese get the message?
Well, that's, that's, time will tell. I mean, we, geese are very territorial in their patterns. And, you know, what our goal is to break their habit of coming to Hominy Valley. You know, I don't, I can't answer that as how long it will actually take.
What Tank's past record is as far as how, you know, she was used to it?
Yeah, it's, yeah, as long as it takes, as long as we, you know.
And he has been succeeding.
He has.
Thank you, Clark.
We were actually thinking that the geese have watched the WLS segment because they didn't show up for about a week after that segment. But they're back. I would like to bring the Board up to date regarding the training component associated with Policy Six-Fifty-Two. Policy Six-Fifty-Two has to do with religion in schools. A training video was produced through Ms. Blunt in our Communications Department. I think it was a very high-quality video. In fact, we obtained feedback on the video from you, the Board. You had an opportunity to look at it for a number of days. We've had parents take a look at that and give us feedback, teachers, administrators. And as you know, I have a faith-based leadership team that's been extremely valuable to us through this process. And the video is now being provided for each school to be viewed with staff. And in fact, that video will be available for the public. I think Mrs. Blunt, is it currently on our employee website? It's where you would access it?
The three-minute video is on the public side and the twenty-minute one is on the employee side. The samples.
All right, there's actually two components to it. The three-minute video is on our public website and that's going to be accessed by not only staff, but students, as well as we'll be using it with parent groups. The twenty-minute video is more specific to training. It involves our attorney, Dan Chatley, going through a number of questions and answers. This is not the final step in that. I want to let you know that on September twenty-first, and I will invite certainly the Board to that, Mr. Chatley will be conducting a final training session and we will have all of our principals up along with a school counselor from each school. Our thought is that we want to make sure that we have at least two resources in the school if staff have questions regarding issues that may come up over this particular year. So, that will take place on September twenty-first. I plan on bringing to the Board, I will make every effort to bring you options regarding Policy Six-Fifty-Three. And if you remember, the real focus on Six-Fifty-Three is the distribution component of religious literature. So, hopefully, I'll be bringing that to you in October, those options for you to look at. I just believe that further attention needs to be given to defining those options. And so, I really felt like at this time, we're just not ready to present it. I want some further input from a number of our faith-based leaders. An update on the INCA High School Solar Project, Panel Project. This is what I know. It's my understanding, Mr. Shore with FLS has contacted Mr. Fairley. Mr. Fairley's not here tonight. He, we think he has a pretty serious flu bug and we told him to go home, please. And so, from Mr. Fairley, I understand that Mr. Shore is being cautiously encouraging and saying that he has current negotiations with several potential investors. And I'll update you as I receive further information as it becomes available. But I wanted to give you that update. I noticed that a number of individuals are wearing orange. In fact, Ms. Blunt was very proud of me. When I got up this morning, I remembered orange and found an orange tie that my wife tried to hide, but I found it. And this is in recognition, and some of you, it looks like you maybe were in orange and didn't even notice. If you have orange on in any capacity, what you're doing is recognizing Hunger Awareness Month. And so, at this time, I'd like to, I see Ms. Vaughn Hensley's out there. I'd like to ask her to come up and share some good news with you regarding the summer meals program. Ms. Hensley?
Chairman, Board members, Dr. Baldwin, I am excited to announce. I'm excited, you can't hear me? I'm excited to announce the results of our summer feeding program. I wanted to. We serve breakfast, lunch, and snacks to fifty-three thousand three hundred and nine meals with our program. We reached that many children. Now, Bill Murdock committed to pick up the tab and I've been worrying him all night. I said, "We're going to need a truck. We're going to have to go to Wells Fargo and we're going to have to get a lot of money." The program costs one hundred and forty-one thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars and fifty-six cents. That includes everything. We came up short. Two hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy cents. The thing that's so incredible about that is there were glitches with some of the regulations. And we actually would have not had a debt at all. But I told Bill he was going to need to write a due check. He said, "I'm getting more nervous by the manager." I am absolutely thrilled with the children that we were able to reach. One of the managers shared that she pulled up to one of the sites. We had twenty-eight sites we either delivered to or they prepared the food at that site. And she said she pulled in with the van and a little boy was standing there and he said, "Can I tell you something?" She said, "Sure." He said, "I moved here from another state and they didn't care about us. Thank you for caring about us and that we get a meal." And she was, she said, "I will never get ever hearing a child say that." So, I'm thrilled with the outcome of this. We were able to employ people who would have been unemployed during those two months. And everyone that participated in it was just absolutely thrilled. Thank you for your support and I am thrilled with these results. Wait a minute.
I have a question for Ms. Vaughn Hensley. I've been requesting, asking, I requested, do the public information request for the data on summer feed program and receive the June data. Thank you so much for that. My question that I still not, a little confused about, because you said you've served fifty-three thousand three hundred and nine meals. How many of those were actually, you know, eaten by children? And it was, I got calls from people saying, you know, meals were being thrown away, that only three kids would show up and there were thirty meals there. So, were these meals eaten by the children or were they just, were they taken to the community center? For example, like, let's say, Big Ivy Community Center?
When you're starting out a new program, the group has to sort of forecast how many they think they will have. And for the first week, you are losing and you know you are. And you go into it knowing you're going to not get it right. But this included any loss that we experienced. So, we did an extremely well, good job of getting, getting a hold on it as quickly as we could. I did close down some sites very quickly. Big Ivy was one and I hated to do it. But the transporting alone for so few, and then I got a letter from a mother and that breaks your heart. But you do what you have to do business-wise. But for example, Old Creek Baptist Church, I was going to have to close down lunch. They got in their cars and vans and went out and brought the children in for lunch. They had an enormous group for breakfast. But so many people worked as hard as they could to get children to the sites. And really, we didn't know for sure our final numbers until everything is tested. And so, you know, although there's waste involved initially, you do work to get a handle on that as quickly as you can.
And as a follow-up to that, so the money was federal reimbursements? Is that how we paid for the money that we spent?
For breakfast, every breakfast, that was eaten by a child, a dollar ninety-three cents. Lunch, three dollars and thirty-eight cents. Snacks went to the Asheville Parks and Recreation Department to receive lunch and an afternoon snack. We were reimbursed seventy-nine cents for those. So, we covered all of our bills ourselves and the food and everything.
And I know some of these meals were served at the YMCA program. Did they pay for any of these meals at the YMCA? I'm just curious, they contributed any?
No, in order for us to prepare the meals, they were in many of our school sites. And in order for us to produce the meals, they did not apply for any funding. So, they, they got breakfast and lunch at all of their sites. At, yeah, I believe it's every site in the Buncon.
Now, were parents paying for the children's over the YMCA program?
Most of the children, my understanding is they are on a voucher. We checked the role, the enrollment at, for example, ST's would not qualify as an open site because none of the surrounding schools were at fifty percent free and reduced or higher, right in that area. But the way I was able to provide the meals is to take their roster and my staff looked up the status of every child in order to determine. Because you have to show what percentage you are free and reduced.
So, would you say the approximate hundred forty thousand nine hundred something dollars that you were reimbursed by the federal government, does that money come from the taxpayers?
It's allotted for summer meals. If we didn't do it, it'd still be sitting there.
Comes from the U.S. Department of Agriculture.
USDA.
So, yes, it is tax.
Right. And they, they have identified through No Kid Hungry Act of two thousand and ten the great number of children who are at risk for their next meal. And many of us don't want to believe that, but that is the truth. Our children are at risk in many cases. When I shared what we were going to do, I had a teacher sit in her car right out, right out on the drive here and she wept. She said, "Our children need this. Thank you." And so, teachers are aware, principals are aware, and those of us in child nutrition know our children need these types of programs.
Thank you so much, Francis.
Can I ask one question on the hundred and forty-one thousand? If we, so what you're saying is if we didn't do the program, if we decided not to have it, it would go somewhere else. There would be, our taxes would still?
It's out there. It's out there. The USDA has, has a budget for this and they've committed more dollars to it. And so, what would happen to it, I can't answer that for you. But I don't think it would go back. They would come up with a way to utilize it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynette.
And, Ms. Chairman, thank you too. I don't know if it's, if it's Mr. Murdock individually or Evelyn, but whoever's doing it. I know we had a palpitation when she said one hundred and forty-one thousand and then I...
I was just saying that there was from a wife, if she heard that.
Two hundred, two hundred, sounds a whole lot better. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Blunt? We have employee recognition.
We're going to have sort of employee recognition in a minute. Can I go to good news?
Yes, you can.
And before I go to the real good news, we're going to have, oh, this is good news. We have some fresher good news than I have. I'd like to ask Kristy Cheek to tell us a little bit. I'd like to ask Kristy Cheek to tell us a little bit of good news direct from the Mountain State Fair.
Good evening.
participate in the Truck and Tractor Event. Also, there is a fierce competition among our high schools and Henderson County schools to enter the CTE display booth. So today was the judging, and I'm gonna bring you the results. So this is very, very firsthand. The winner this year, the students actually designed a Ferris wheel in AutoCAD, and the welding students actually welded the Ferris wheel together. So this year's recipient of a $250 prize goes to North Buncombe High School. Oh. Oakley High School was second, and East Henderson High School was third. And all of the other schools received honorable mention, and they received $60. So we had two special needs booths as well. They were represented, and Eka Middle School won first place, and Eka High School won second place. So I would like to congratulate all the students for these wonderful works in this booth. And the Truck and Tractor Event will be September... And support our students up there.
I'd also like to acknowledge the United Way. I think we have some United Way volunteers and employees with us. Today was the Day of Caring across our area, and I don't know exactly how many schools we had participated with a hassle toll. Anybody know that? I want to say 17, but I'm afraid that may not be accurate, so I won't say that. But we had a lot of volunteers from businesses and organizations at our schools. They did everything from helping with mulch and projects outside landscaping to other things that might have been inside. So thank you not only to those volunteers, but also to our maintenance department, because I think you all were scrambling to go out and help when they needed some help with those landscaping and other projects. So thank you to those folks for Day of Caring. I'd also like to ask Bill Murdock to quickly come up. I think he's gonna tell you something in public comment, but Bill, tell us the results of Tools for Schools real quick.
Thank you. And really, in case my wife, Robin, gets to see this on TV, that was Evelyn money we were talking about, and certainly at that level, but the $200, I think we can certainly take care of either way. So thank you for the, just for the honor for us to be part of this, because it's a great program. And for all of you for the Children's Hunger, I know Children First is here, and I'll look at the great work that they do in the community with that, and our snack, the Food for Thought Program, our Backpack Programs, and not just that, with all the great groups out there that are working together to make sure. And, you know, it is an honor, and I know sometimes, it's not an exact science. And, you know, I know, and I'm sure, again, I don't want to pick on Allison, everybody knows she sees that all the time, too, that when you're hungry, nothing else matters. And whether it's school, whether it's home, whatever it is. And, you know, there has to be some ways until we get it right, then that's fine, but I would rather see some meals go uneaten and help two or three. And I keep thinking about the young lady at Irwin Middle a number of years ago who was going home and eating, she was eating cornmeal mix out of the box, because that's all they had at home for weeks. And they called Evelyn, of course, and Susan Riddle, we were able to help. But again, thank you so much for all of that, and all that you're here wearing orange, and all that everybody's working on, and just for letting Evelyn be just a small part of it. And Ms. Swonker, thank you so much for the, now $213 instead of that. But Tools for Schools, just briefly, I want to thank a lot of you here who joined us in Tools for Schools. Of course, Ed Ingles was in Ingles Program for a long time, and now with Evelyn, and Clear Channel, WLOS. Again, more than a million items were either donated or purchased this year. It took less time to distribute them, and Dusty and Ann, I know you were there telling me, certainly, you know, Steve, you were there quite a bit. Pat, I didn't see you at four o'clock, but you were close.
I was first, but I wasn't four.
You were first, but you weren't there at four. It was like four fifteen.
I was a little late. The sun wasn't up.
Yeah. But thank you all, not only for your donations in doing that, but also maybe they're helping distribute on the following Tuesday. And right now, more than 1,400 students have received help. And again, and a lot of the schools, we've delivered quite a number of things to the schools, you know, and schools are actually still calling us for various things that they need. So please keep in mind that our partnership with Tools for Schools isn't just the beginning of school. It goes all year long. So, you know, I don't hesitate to say this, Jack, or any of you that need help, you know, need something, you know, in your school, please do. And real quickly, too, not to stir the thunder, but, you know, one thing, Donna and Jill with Graduation Initiative, had a young man, a father call us, a young father, actually taking a stepson in, young man has not had a chance. I was living in another state, king gear with a grocery bag of clothes and bar repair shoes. And through Donna's work and Jill's work, and Ms. Roni at Robertson, who's gonna be enrolled tomorrow, I think, and, you know, he still has a long way to go. We're helping him with his dental, and getting him some clothes through Evelyn. And the young man didn't have a chance, but coming here to Buncombe County, coming to Buncombe County Schools, and the work that it took getting, I know, getting his transcripts and all these things that happened, how hard that Jill and Donna and worked, you know, to do that, and I can't thank you again enough. You know, you talk about in the best interest of students, you know, certainly nothing exemplifies that in this board, and not only the Board of Education, but the teachers, the principals, everyone here in Buncombe County, and everybody that works so hard. And I think this young man is gonna turn out just fine, but he's, up to this point, he has lived a nomadic life, from one relative to another, one parent to another, and his stepfather, he was bringing here to take care of him and get him started. And so that's because of all the work that's been done here, it's built on all these years, and the commitment that you have. So, you know, it's again, an honor for Evelyn Charities to work with all of you in doing that, and just the heart that you have for students, and realizing that there are two bottom lines, certainly a fiscal bottom line, and you have to govern that, but the second bottom line is the students. And I don't think you've ever lost sight of that, even in the midst of these difficult economic times. And for all of us here, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
And that's a terrific segue, because on our good news tonight, as the formal presentation, I'd like to call upon Donna Lanahan with the Graduation Initiative with some really, really excellent good news and awards for two of our schools. TC Robertson with Annie Roni is here, and Jim Brown is here with Irwin. Bob, I will have you come down to do the honors with the presentation, but I think Donna's gonna talk first.
Okay.
Get ready.
All right.
Get ready.
Mr. Ron, our members of the board, Dr. Baldwin, it is always a pleasure to be able to share updates from the Graduation Initiative, because we're so very proud of our results. Those few slides that you're gonna see tonight are actually part of a longer report that you can access from the Buncombe County Schools website. Ms. Blunt created a nice headline for us, and there's a summary slide and then a longer report, so I would encourage you to take a look at that. Just, this slide is very difficult to see, but hopefully you can see the trend line of our dropout numbers in Buncombe County schools. And I'll give you a couple highlights from this slide. The number in 2010, 2011 was 292. That was a 17.8% reduction from the year before, and a 25% reduction from '08, '09, which was our previous record low. And it is a 35% reduction from when Graduation Initiative began. So we are tremendously proud of these numbers, and the principals know, many of you here know, that the 20th day is also the number that determines our dropout count for 2011, 2012. And I'm gonna go out on a limb and say that I will bet that that trend line continues to go down this year. Preliminary numbers are very positive, so I hope that we can share those results, those official results soon. I also want to share our cohort graduation rate numbers with you. We knew that there would be some point of a lag between the reduction in dropout numbers and the increase in our cohort graduation rates because of how those numbers are calculated differently. But you see, again, that starting in '09, '10, we started this climb, and 2011, 2012 was 80%, which is the highest four-year cohort graduation rate that we have seen in Buncombe County. This slide gives you some sense of each of our high schools and the trends that we're seeing across the county. But tonight, I really want to recognize two of our high schools who have shown tremendous improvement. And those two high schools and their leaders, we want to recognize with our Compass Award. And we started the Compass Award several years ago to recognize and acknowledge schools that were really moving in the right direction in terms of the goals of the Graduation Initiative. And it could be a particular program that they had initiated, it could be a comprehensive approach to dropout prevention in their schools, but something that set them apart, something that caught our attention. And we did not give a Compass Award last year. I can't really explain why. Just got busy, and true. There was that also. So this year, we decided to make it right, and tonight, we're going to recognize two schools. The first school that we're going to recognize is Irwin High School. And again, I apologize for the size of this slide, but you can see here clearly, now I ask Dr. Brown to please come forward as we look at these numbers. In 2008, 2009, Irwin High School had 107 dropouts. The next year, they had 60 dropouts. The following year, they had 36 dropouts. If that's not moving in the right direction, I don't know what is. And I bet Dr. Brown would tell us that that trend line is also likely to go down for the 11, 12 school year as well. I also want to acknowledge Irwin High School's four-year cohort graduation rate. You see the trend line going up, which is exactly what we want to see, from 60.4% in '08, '09, excuse me, in '09, '10, to 79.4% this past year. So again, tremendous improvement at Irwin High School. That just really deserves a lot of recognition, and is the result of a lot of efforts of people across the system, and certainly Dr. Brown's leadership as well. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Just as a point of clarification, it's important to understand the four-year cohort graduation rate measures how many students start in ninth grade and finish and graduate with their high school diploma four years later. We also report a five-year cohort graduation rate, which accounts for students who may take a little longer, but in terms of accountability for our school system, we really look at this four-year cohort graduation rate as our benchmark, with the exception of Irwin High School. True, which has an extended graduation rate. Next, we'd like to recognize Annie Roni and TC Robertson High School. We wanted to, we recognized Irwin really for a trend of improvement over time, and we want to recognize TC Robertson for some tremendous firsts that they accomplished this last year. You see that in 2009, 2010, TC Robertson had 42 dropouts. This past year, they had 15. 15 is the lowest dropout number ever recorded at a traditional high school in Buncombe County. And TC Robertson met another high water mark, if you will. You can see that trend line starting in '08, '09, the four-year cohort graduation rate going up, and TC Robertson was the first of our traditional high schools in Buncombe County to surpass 90% four-year cohort graduation rate. So congratulations for that as well. Thank you.
And just to read the C, take a hint, say it, it's the Compass Award is presented to TC Robertson High School to commend you for your outstanding efforts and significant achievement as part of the Graduation Initiative at Buncombe County Schools, Evelyn Charities, and Buncombe County Government, given on this day, the 6th of September, signed by Dr. Tony Baldwin. And I'd also really like to, again, even though I've said it, express appreciation to Evelyn Charities and all the folks that have helped work with this Graduation Initiative. I know it's a very unique program in public schools, and so we appreciate that partnership once again. So, yep. Thank you very much.
Real quickly, I wanted to just add three thank yous of my own. Certainly, I would echo, the partnership with Evelyn is a tremendous part of the success of Graduation Initiative. Certainly, our team, Jill Castello is here, she worked with TC Robertson High School, Emily Walter, Sharon Fish, those folks are a tremendous asset to our school system, and I want to acknowledge them as well. As many of you know, we served almost 150 students here this summer with our Mini-Master Program, many of whom took advantage of the summer meals program. So thank you to Ms. Conklin for that opportunity to help serve our high school students here this summer. And lastly, I know that those high school principals are tremendously competitive, so we've sort of issued this challenge to get all the high schools to, the ones who aren't to 80% yet, they will be there next year, and the ones who are past 80%, will get to 90%. So I'm gonna go on record again to say that's our Graduation Initiative goal for 11, 12. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I add something to this? Is Dr. Brown still in the hallway? I saw him go out the door, but he left. I'm gonna tell a story that, two days ago, I was at Irwin High School, and Dr. Brown and I were out in front of the office, this was about 4:30 in the afternoon. They have a big box that's the, lost and found box for coaxing that kind of thing. We were just sitting there talking. And to me, this story is why things are improving at Irwin, and it goes a lot to the Graduation Initiative folks, to the Evelyn folks, but it's about people. And I'm sitting there, and we're not talking about anything that's school-related, we're just shooting the bull. And a gentleman walks in the door, and he's obviously looking for someone for some help. And Dr. Brown quickly said, "Sir, can I help you?" And he came over, and he told a story, and without getting into a lot of the details, he's told a story that would have fit any of these stories tonight, of a young man, his son, he had been to Community High School, I believe, he had, I believe it was three courses short of something, and anyway, he wanted him back in the regular school, and he should have been at Irwin High School. And he had been there for a day or two, and something had happened, and it wasn't working out. This was the principal of the high school. It was at 4:30, everybody was gone, counselors were gone, there was nobody in the main office, but the principal. And he took him into his office. First, he started asking some questions, and when the information that he was needing to get was obviously gonna be something that he thought he could help with, he took him into the office. I sat outside and waited on him, and about 15, 20 minutes later, they came back out. And the gentleman thanked him with tears in his eyes. And I don't know what the result of the conversation was, other than I could tell that Dr. Brown had helped him, had helped his father. And what the result would be for that son, I don't know. But he took the time, at the end of a long day, as the principal of the high school. He didn't take his number and say, "I'll have a guidance counselor call you. I'll have, I'll call the Graduation Initiative folks, I'll call up, and I'll have somebody get in touch with you." He took the man in his office and worked with him. And that, to me, was really, I had no idea this was gonna go on tonight, and I wish he was still here. But that's the kind of guy that he is, and that's what it takes, is people caring about people and willing to help. And I'm sorry he's not here to hear the story, but he lived it and was part of it, and I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Beth. Ms. Swonker?
Yes, sir.
With our curriculum feature for tonight?
Good evening, everyone. We are focusing this year on creating new school improvement plans for all of our schools and our departments as well. And one of the focus areas for curriculum will be our academically gifted program. We had a wonderful parent meeting last night with Dr. Rick Cartwright of the Duke Tips Program. He gave wonderful characteristics of gifted learners to parents, to our school folks there. Most, all of our staff in ARG was with us last night, so what a great opportunity. We've built TC Robertson auditorium, and thanks to TC for housing us. It's something we hope to do again, to bring these parents together. Parents also got to discuss... Parents also got to discuss about forming their own parent chapter, much like a PTO or PTA called a page chapter. So we have names of volunteers who are interested in that. In addition to working with our gifted population, we have purchased a new learning tool, a platform, that will allow students and staff and families to work together to advance our learning with these students. So that's exciting training that will be coming to our teachers this year. But tonight, I wanted to share with you, what does it look like in the classroom? So we've asked a few of our teachers to come in, just to give you a glimpse into the classroom, so that you can see the types of differentiation that we often get to see. Janet Clemens is our AIG leading person in our office. She works with special services. So I'll have her introduce our guest this evening. Good evening. It's wonderful to be here tonight after the great program that we had last night. It was exciting to see that many families and staff there. And I think it was just a great way to kick this school year off. Tonight, we've got an elementary feature, and we've also got a middle school feature. So I'm asking our elementary folks to come up first. We've got Debbie Ross, who's one of our AIG specialists, that serves West Buckham Elementary and Lester Elementary. And Sharon Katz, who serves Glen Arden Elementary and Black Mountain Primary. And they're going to share with us something about international toys in space.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Katz, and this is Debbie Ross. We are delighted to be here with you tonight to share part of our AIG program with you. Debbie and I are going to focus on international toys in space. We were able to, not once, but twice, visit Raleigh and attend NASA training there. We received numerous materials for this unit, International Toys in Space, when we were there in last November. And we brought those ideas back to our classrooms in our schools. And we modified them to use with our third-grade AIG students. As part of our curriculum sharing in our monthly AIG staff meetings, we presented an extensive presentation to our colleagues and provided them with enough information to access the resources from NASA and to use those with their own gifted students. We have also completed training on another NASA program called the Space Weather Action Center. And we currently use that with our fourth-grade AIG students. The fourth-grade students can monitor the solar activity in real time. And then they explore solar flares and coronal mass ejections from the sun. And they learn how those affect our life on Earth as they create disturbances in Earth's magnetic field. These units are just a part of our commitment to cutting-edge technology, which the AIG program has always actively implemented. As an AIG staff, we are committed to the continued use of technology in our instruction throughout the whole AIG program. In addition, the work that we do with the International Toys in Space Unit fits the Buckham County Schools initiatives, things like global awareness, science, technology, engineering, and math, the STEM program, and of course, technology that Sharon was just talking to you about. This unit aligns with North Carolina's New Common Core and Essential Standards for Third Grade. It includes the AIG curriculum goals from our local AIG plan. It incorporates 21st century skills, which we all know is very important for our students. And it supports the scientific method of inquiry. So it hits a lot of areas as we work with our students on this particular Toys in Space unit. I'll give you a little overview of our unit. The concept of microgravity is introduced to students. And then the students are provided with several toys that originate from all around the world. We talk about the countries where those toys originate. And then the students get to take on the role of scientists and engineers. And this is very exciting and engaging for them. They explore to see how the selected toys function in Earth's gravity. And then they record their observations and their data. At this point, then the students develop hypotheses about how they think the toys will work in microgravity aboard the International Space Station. And then they get to test their hypothesis by viewing NASA videos. And NASA provides videos of the actual astronauts using each toy on the International Space Station. And then, as they watch what really happens with the astronauts on the space station, they're able to reflect on their hypothesis and discuss the results of the investigation. Debbie and I worked on some unit extensions. As the students finished this unit, Debbie worked with her students on exploring Newton's laws of gravity. And my students investigated astronauts' daily lives aboard the International Space Station, while we focused on the scientific work that occurred on the station as well. And so we'd like to end our portion of tonight's presentation by just sharing one of those NASA videos with you, so you can see what the students see as they are seeing how the toys are actually used on the space station.
On Earth, jumping rope requires jumping. Unfortunately, when we jump in space, we're going to hit the ceiling every time. Here, Valeri decides to abandon the jumping part of the jump rope and concentrate on the spinning part. This is not as easy as we expected either. Valeri had to raise his leg without pushing off, then he had to swing the jump rope without hitting himself or the wall. An unnecessarily long rope gets tangled easily. Finally, it works. Valeri makes several good turns of the rope, but he still tumbles and bounces into walls. Imagine you were jumping rope in space. What new techniques would you try?
That's pretty interesting.
And you can see why the children love this unit.
Thank you, Ms. Katz, Ms. Ross. Thank you very much.
Now, we're going to promote ourselves on up to middle school. And we've got Chris Hutchoff, who works with North Buckham Middle School program. And Wayne Drummond from Owen Middle School. And he also serves at Black Mountain Elementary as well. So I think Wayne's got, going to take us through a lesson he did in his class today.
Hi. We'd like to just take a moment to review with you what the AIG goals are in our current academic plan. And I apologize, that seems a little bit small to me, but my eyes are bad. These are the nine goals that are identified currently in our AIG plan. We will be rewriting our AIG plan this school year. And we'll submit that this summer for your approval. But with our students, we look at focusing on the unique academic and social, emotional needs of our learners. We also want to promote independent, critical, and creative thinking skills and to help them identify and solve meaningful problems. Four, five, and six, where we look at mathematical reasoning and often an application of concepts, so real-world applications, communicating intelligently and creatively with others, and the ability to think critically and demonstrate social responsibility. Our last three goals look at collaboration to accomplish a common goal, looking at monitoring one's own understanding of learning needs and the commitment to the learning process. And then also to expand concepts by using informational literacy, media literacy, and technology literacy. Now, what does that look like in application? As we look at the Buckham County Schools initiatives, what we as middle school specialists try to do is, was just give you a quick snapshot of how we do those things in the regular classroom. So with technology, we were trained, two years ago, I believe, with the Moodle online course delivery. And Ms. Swanger also mentioned that we're going to be learning, sorry. We're going to be learning the new online platform this year. And we're very excited about how to bring that to our students and to our community. We use interactive technologies like Wordle and Modo, Smartboard lessons, discovery education. Web page development has been one of our key focuses in the last several years. We have parent and student email groups that we use for communication and surveys. We also harvest websites for student and current technologies in the classroom. Now, when we take a look at the global education component, we promote the geography bee, and many of us are the coordinators for that on our school levels. All of our curriculum units are related to global education as well. And you can see there, it's a little bit small, that each one of our grade levels has a curriculum unit that is focused on the global education piece. We do real-world simulations like Building a Nation. And if you want to see some middle schoolers argue, put them in a position where they have to make decisions about how to spend money and where to spend money. And they really get excited about that. And so with the Building a Nation simulation, they are, they take the roles of policymakers. And it's a tough simulation, but it's one that provides them with some excellent opportunities for real thinking and how does one decide where your priorities lie. Financial literacy units are a large part of what we do as well. We look at critical thinking activities, opportunities. And we bring in guest speakers and try to make connections with our community professionals. I know at North Buckham Middle School, we've been very fortunate to have, in the past two years, I've been able to bring one of the Lost Boys from Sudaian, Stephen Gaku, who came to speak to my students. And also, last year, we had Holocaust survivor Dr. Walter Zipper, who came. And those made connections for the students far beyond the walls of our school and also beyond any textbook that we could bring. And we also focus on STEM education. We look at mathematics competitions, science competitions, engineering projects that we do with our students, technology integration, and also science inquiry activities where we can provoke students to thought and allow them to investigate and question and wonder and practice those things that we know are important for scientific discovery. And with that, I'd like to draw your attention to Wayne Drummond from Owen Middle School, who's going to be kind of giving you a flavor of one of these science inquiry lessons.
There's one thing to talk, there's another thing to show. Here is a snapshot of the last little bit of my class on the first day of school that I see them. I will be me, you may role-play my young students. See my bucket of water here, if you move up to that okay? Sorry if the audience can't see with that. So, young scholars, I was sitting around the house the other day, a little bit bored, thinking a few things. And I decided to play a game called Will It Float? I know, I'm a nerd. That's what I do. So I found some soft drink cans, and I wanted to know if they floated. Here's a Diet Mountain Dew. Any of you have a hypothesis whether that will float in that water, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's see, let's put that in there. And, yes, it floats. Coca-Cola, my personal favorite. Do you think it will float or sink?
Float.
That will float. Uh-huh, okay. Then we should put that in there. And, yes, good job. Wait, wait, wait. No, okay. That one, hmm, oh, almost. All right, well, if Coke sinks, then what about Dr. Pepper?
Sinks.
Sink, sink.
Float.
Float, okay. Let's, Dr. Pepper, get the air out from there. And Dr. Pepper floats. Ah, okay. Here's a plan. If I shake it, it'll get more bubbles, right? And bubbles float. So I think if I shake it a little, it'll float. Yes? Yes. Knows that sound? All right. Well, you're free to argue with me. I foster academic argument.
We're under a lot of pressure here.
So you're saying it can actually add any air? Nice, good job. Okay, perhaps it just needs a little encouragement. Melody, sink, sink. Please sink. Of course. How about Sprite? Sink, sink. I didn't say please, did I? That was the problem. I'm certain of that. Mountain Dew, any hypothesis?
Sink.
Sink, sink. Now, green, consider the green can. Sprite floated, this is green. Are you sure?
It's going to float.
It's going to float, okay. So it must not be the color of the can.
Or the melt.
Diet Pepsi, yes, no, sink, float?
Float.
All right. Float. Yes. You know, if the can is predominantly the color silver, it floats. So once again, can we qualitatively analyze the color of the can? Y'all just aren't Fanta, Fanta? This is the only other one that is caffeine-free. But Sprite is caffeine-free, and it floated. So is it caffeine that makes it float? And Pepsi? You know, spelled backwards, that is Pep, I think, if you remember. Pepsi, do you think it will sink or float?
Sink.
You want me to shake it?
Sure. Shaking can't do a thing with a can inside.
So, class, I believe it's time to go. The bell is bells down. If you would, I, if you'd like to do a little more research on that during the course of the following week, next time you come back, we'll talk a little bit more about it.
All right.
In a flash.
All right.
You're welcome. You have any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course we do. What's the answer?
And, and I wanted you to have questions unanswered. I wanted to leave you with things to worry about. That's my goal.
You succeeded.
I like to stir things up. And there's no reason at all, there's no rule that says you have to have the answer by the time the bell rings. Not at all. And so I did have, that was the first day of school. And the following week, we did follow up. I had some students go to Great Links and bother their parents for a great degree to explore that further. And it was fun. It got, one of the culminating events was a health lesson about the weight of sugar versus the weight of sugar substitute and the mathematical calculation that, given the fact that Mountain Dew has one hundred and seventy calories, and we determined that predominantly those calories come from sugar, or I didn't get into the high-fructose corn syrup, white cane sugar complication. But if one of these packets of sugar is ten calories, and that Mountain Dew is seventeen calories, then how many packs of sugar might we predict are in one Mountain Dew? And then I asked them, I bet. And then I asked them, I bet if your parents allowed you, you would probably take one of these packets of sugar and then open it up and lick your fingers, stick it in your hand, put it on your tongue, and repeatedly do that until you consumed one packet of sugar. And they said, sure, we would do that. Then I asked, what would you do with 17? And I counted out 17, and I got a few views, which is exactly what I wanted. I thought, well, that's just a 12-ounce can, what if you go to McDonald's and get a 24-ounce cup? It's not 17, it's 34, and what do you do at the end of the meal at McDonald's? You go back over there and get a free refill. So that's not 34, that's 68. And you read articles about the problem in the United States of America that people around here have a weight problem. We had fun with that, and that's just the nature of what I do in academically gifted programs, to make their head hurt and just stir things up. Interestingly, I chose that as my first day of class in fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, and it was fun to see how each of those classes did with that. They all, about the same. They were a little more gullible than you were. They were more fun than you were.
Thank you for your attention, and hope you learned a little something. Gives you an idea of the flavor of our academically gifted programs. Do you have any questions? I just wanted to ask, so the enrichment portion of the gifted program, is the budget still a pay-out about 45 minutes once a week? That's what's happening in many of our schools, depending on their schedule and the number of students that they serve, sometimes they are able to do more than that, or they are able to go into the classroom and do some support in the general classroom with their students or with other groups of students as well. And then again, we also offer the Problem Solvers for Grades One and Two in elementary schools, and that's not technically part of the formal gifted program, but it is another support that we do to try to grow those students and begin to identify them in potential service and dark grade. I just wanted to update you on one other special services parent issue. We also had a meeting on August 21st with our EC Parents, a small group, and the Exceptional Children's Assistance Center at Davidson. They came and led us for several hours in determining what a exceptional children's parent advisory group might look like, the different types of forms and functions that it could take. And we are having a second meeting to follow up on that later on September, and we're all looking forward to establishing with that parent group as well.
All right, thank you. Yes, Dr. Ball.
I had the opportunity to hear Rick Courtwright speak to the group, and I think the board might be interested in knowing that he's a nationally renowned speaker on gifted education. He works at Duke, but he is a Carolina grad, who laughed a little bit about that. But what I think you would be interested in knowing is that he is an Irwin High School graduate in 1968, and he also began his teaching career in Bunkham County Schools, I think, if I'm correct, at Valley Springs, at the time, I think even Valley Springs Elementary and hired by Mr. Bill Estes, and he was very proud about that. So I wish everyone could have heard him because he was an outstanding speaker.
Ms. Ball, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do, sir. We have Jason Moore of Chandler Mount Road.
Hello, my name is Jason Moore.
Yeah, if you'll step up to the podium. And just a reminder for everyone that signed up for public comment, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Jason Moore, and I'm a parent of two seven-year-old, I guess they just turned eight, two eight-year-old twins at Camlar Elementary. Sorry, nervous, not ever done this before. Anyway, I wanted to come and speak real quick on the Universal Breakfast Program, and tell Bunkham County Schools, you know, my personal thanks, it has made a big difference in our child's lives. They enjoy the breakfast, it appears to be nutritionally balanced, it has protein and carbohydrates and everything they need. They do, they do have a good time with it. They, I wanted to tell you, it does help us, too. We are, you know, pressed for time every morning. A lot of times, I'm having to leave before the kids do, and so I'm not there, you know, and we try to let them sleep and I get up at two, you know, two o'clock in the morning, you know, while I go to work, that kind of thing. But it has made a big difference for them, and I wanted to give my own personal thanks to you guys for participating in this federally funded program. I go in some mornings when I work late, and I help, you know, take the lunches or the breakfast to the different classrooms, and there are children there that I am convinced would not have breakfast if it wasn't for you guys, you know, making that possible. So we just wanted to say as a family, thank you very much, and it is very well, you know, appreciated from our point of view.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Appreciate that. Ms. Ball, what was the name again?
Sarah Moore.
Moore.
As you heard, my name is Sarah Moore. I am the better half of the gentleman. I cannot tell you guys, it's not only made a time difference for us, but it's also made a financial difference. It, just thank you so very, very much. I am actually in the school quite a bit. We do volunteer as much as we can, our children are absolutely first, not only our children, but everybody in that school. Camlar is just wonderful. I just wanted to say, I heard some comments from the staff and miscellaneous parents there, it is awesome. Everything has been positive, and I, I'm talking like passing-by people, they don't even know I hear these things. The classrooms are calm around the morning. They said the children come in, they're ready for breakfast, they're down, and they can get started on time, because these kids are ready to have breakfast at 7:20 in the morning. The parents are getting their kids there to school on time. So I just wanted to tell you guys, I mean, I could just go on and on, but really, really thank you for that. I just wanted to also thank you guys for bringing in Dr. Courtwright yesterday. I am thrilled that Bunkham County cares about their AIG children. Both of our children are on the AIG track, and they are so different, I cannot tell you. Our son, I don't really have a lot of concerns about, our daughter needs some extra support, and I cannot tell you guys enough, I hope you heard what he said. We want excellence. We want to be known as that county that has excellence coming from it, okay? Like Dr. Courtwright mentioned last night, he said, you want a neurosurgeon who strived for excellence who didn't get that D and just passed, you know? So I just want to thank you for bringing in such a great speaker. I want you guys to know that there's parents out there who really, really, really care. Please do not let these students just fly by. There's so much help for the students that are below, we need that help for the students that are above. Please, thank you. Thank you so much for bringing him in.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Bill Murdock?
I don't know if I would have signed up to follow that wonderful couple, but that's awfully hard, thank you. Just a reminder on a couple things that we have going with our partnerships, the, our Outback Steakhouse Heroes for Hope 10K Walk, Run, and Roll is coming up October 13th, which is the second Saturday. This Wednesday, we are kicking off the event at Outback, yes, Pat, you're invited to.
I like one.
You caught me, no? But we'd love to have all of y'all, you know, come enjoy us for lunches. We kick off the walk, and as you know, a couple of years ago, we focused everything that we do on this event, to Bunkham County Schools and our whole community school, as well as the children, because we, so many of the families that we assist, whether we get calls from the school, or whether we get calls just from DSS or from other agencies, or from the families themselves, they have children, I'd say a great majority of them do. And so when we started looking at, how do we want to reinvent this event, what do we want to do, what's the biggest impact we can have on our community, it all came back with schools. So everything we raise in that, as well as our pumpkins, starting again in October, our Ingles Heroes for Pumpkins in October in the schools and Ingles markets, all of that goes back to help our students here in schools, whether it's food, whether it's clothing. And to give you an idea how much the need is at, we see at Evelyn, not that you, you know, have, would surprise you, but this year, in the first, less than two weeks of school, we gave out vouchers for clothes and shoes of more than 500 children. Last year, the entire month of, the first month of school, we did about 300 children. So, as, or students, really. So, you know, it continues to grow, and again, your partnership with Evelyn Charities and what we do together, you know, just helps to reach out more and more, and again, we can thank you, enough for all of that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock.
Good evening. Alisa Hickson, I'm with Manah Food Bank, I'm also the mother of a 12-year-old in middle school. Number one, I want to congratulate you on a successful summer food program. We work with dozens of agencies in Bunkham County, and we have had tremendous feedback from that program, so thank you for that. I wanted to also mention, Manah Food Bank distributed 10 million pounds of food last year in the 16 counties of western North Carolina. We do work with 231 different agencies. 97.5 thousand pounds of food was distributed to Bunkham County schoolchildren alone, just in our Anapac program. The Anapac program is a five-pound pack of food that goes, I don't know, that goes home with children on a Friday, many of those children who face empty homes and empty cupboards. It really struck me as a parent and as someone who volunteers to deliver those packs, when I realized these kids in my son's class were going home with no food. And as I saw all of the kids in my son's school racing out on a Friday to go and have weekend and have fun, and I thought about these kids that dreaded going home because there's no food. Of course, I see that on a regular basis, haven't I? You know, many of you know already, we've got 29.9% of our children in western North Carolina living in conditions of food insecurity. It's probably even higher than that, and we've got some new study results between America that will come out next week. I know many of you know already, but hunger, fear, confusion, and depression are the constant companions of these children, who through absolutely no fault of their own, find themselves without food. These children need more than hope to survive and thrive. But for many of these kids, breakfast is hope. And as the two of you just said, to be able to know, to get up in the morning and go have breakfast, wow, that is so powerful. So thank you so much for doing that. I also want to say, of course, Manah, we feel that all children should be nourished every day. And for those of you that know already, and that wore orange, it is Hunger Action Month this month, and so Manah has a huge series of events, programs, initiatives that we're doing every day this month. And in fact, I've got a flyer that I'd love to distribute to some of the schools. Wednesday, at the Mountain State Fair, is a food drive, bring five cans of food, get it free, all the food, of course, will be distributed through Manah Food Bank. And we have our Empty Bowls event, Fund Decos doing an event, we just have tons of playgrounds helping us, so thank you so much for all that you do for our children.
Thank you, Ms. Hickson.
Hello, I've enjoyed being here, I've learned a lot tonight, and a lot of, I've heard a lot of good things. I'm not surprised, I'm born and raised in Bunkham County, so I know that all these good things are happening in Bunkham County. But I do have a question and a concern that I would like to have clarified. There is a segment on the local news, and it's called Reality Check, and I've seen several segments on this particular TV program on the six o'clock news concerning the Bunkham County schools. And every now and then, I'm at home at six o'clock attempting to cook dinner, not that I do very well, but I do attempt. One of the most recent segments was about the solar panels at Inca High School. It was reported that approximately a quarter of a million dollars has been spent on these solar panels. As a citizen, should I be confident that what is being reported is honest, true, true, and accurate? A quarter of a million dollars seems like a lot for solar panels. Then, I read a report in a paper that seemed to contradict this information. I know that Bunkham County schools are doing well, and that there is great stewardship being used for the taxpayers' money, and I appreciate that, because I think being a great steward of money is always important. These are hard times, but I believe you always should be a good steward, steward of your money. But because I'm concerned about what's being reported in the news, and whether or not it is accurate, I am requesting a copy of the Inca High solar panel, and the money that the schools get from the cafeterias, from the extras that they sell, I want to know how the money is used. I'm assuming that the money is being used for things that the schools need, but as a citizen, when I'm at home after working a long day, and I'm hearing things on the news that don't seem to be accurate, as a citizen, this is my only way of getting information from Bunkham County schools. And I think I might need to come to the school board meeting more often, because I've learned a lot tonight, but I need to know from all of, from all of you, that you are reporting to the news media honesty and integrity, and that you are telling us the truth, that there's nothing being hidden from us, and that we can depend on each of you to tell us what we need to know.
Ms. Bowman?
Yes.
If you will see Ms. Blunt, she'd be glad to help you with that information.
Thank you.
Ms. Blunt, who's next?
Hi, I'm Alan Ditmore of Lester. My shirt should make it clear that I have a lot of cultural and straight-up differences with Ms. Bolliford over there. But when I read in minutes and, and some blog reports about a lot of transparency issues, under normal circumstances, I shouldn't have to cross the aisle on that, but I don't think these are normal circumstances, that, that I have supported people with very different values from my own, when I felt that there was an old guard circling the wagons against transparency and, and against safeguards against cronyism, anti-cronious safeguards. And, and I appreciate when there's somebody, somebody with the status to investigate, to audit, and go through the books, and seek information, and, and also the political motivation to do so, to find the problem and expose them. So when I heard that there was a, not just a limit on staff time to provide, to provide auditing-type information, but a complete ban on unapproved information requests, not a limit, but a ban, I really had a problem with that. That, that I just want to warn you, that if you circle the wagons too tightly, you're going to build a very diverse coalition against you. A coalition that couldn't be more diverse in terms of fundamental values. I sort of have a question, I heard about this AIG curriculum, I'm wondering if it was, if it's locally controlled, if we have local people deciding what to teach, because I'm very interested in local curriculum control. One problem I have with focusing on a space station, well, Newt Gingrich would be on space stations. And, and there's a connection there, because he thinks that if, he thinks that if we can colonize space, we won't have to teach contraception. And if you get focused on that, if you get people what is essentially a false hope... on that, if you give people what is essentially a false hope and put that in the curriculum, that we're going to, the human race is going to end up being like Star Trek and colonize the universe and we can end up beating, you know, 100 trillion people, then there's stuff we don't need to do.
Thank you, Mr. Ditmore.
And, and that's the stuff that needs to be in the curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Ditmore. Ms. Blunt?
Good evening, Chairman, Chairman Reinhardt, members of the board, Superintendent Baldwin. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm Allison Jordan, Executive Director of Children First Communities and Schools. And I have to say, the Moores nailed it tonight. They, they were right on and I'm really proud to be in the same room with them and proudly know that there are parents, parents out there. And I know that they're not the only ones. At Children First Communities and Schools, we serve over 1,600 children in our community, focusing on low-income children with a goal to decrease both the incidences and the impact of poverty, consequently decreasing the dropout rate. And we, our work includes both public policy advocacy and direct services. And we recognize the importance of our students having those healthy and regular meals. And our direct service programs reflect that. They include a food pantry at the Family Resource Center on the campus of Emma Elementary. We have snacks at three of our learning centers that are in low-income housing, as well as snacks at our summer camp that is offered to the students we serve. And I could also, you've heard lots of stories tonight, and I could tell you stories about families coming in for a food box, and I could tell you stories about kids asking for extra snack in the afternoon because that's probably going to, it might be their dinner that night. But the story that I want to share with you is about summer camp. Our summer camp is free and all we ask is that students bring lunch. In one week, we noticed that there were three cousins living together and they hadn't come for a couple of days. Our leaders went and went to their apartment, checked on them, and their mother said that they didn't have any food. Because they didn't have any food, she didn't want to send them because we ask that they bring their own lunch. We provide everything else, but we don't have the resources to provide lunch. And I'm a stickler for rules. You may have got rules and policies for a reason, but I also know that rules can be bent and broken if they're hurting a child. So our leaders said, please have your children come back for the rest of the summer. We will provide their lunch. We sent them to the food pantry, our Family Resource Center, gave them a food box and information on food stamps. This was a couple of summers ago. I want to let you know that your summer program is making a difference in our community. And I know that most people, when they bring petitions to you, they want you to change something or they're negative petitions. But I have a petition tonight that I'm calling a thank you petition. So on behalf of the families that we are serving, on behalf of the family that got food because we were able to provide that to them, and the 88 other people represented on this petition tonight, I want to say thank you. Thank you for providing the Super Summer Meals Program. Thank you for providing the Universal Breakfast Program. I believe that you're doing the right thing for children in our community. I'm excited to partner, partner with you. Thank you for putting children first.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Excuse me. Hi, I'm Linda Humphries, a retired Bunkham County school teacher. Had the pleasure of working with children for 34 years. At the last school board meeting, the board voted unanimously to do, to do an independent study of the hazardous waste contamination on the Bunkham County School Central Office property. In a report after this meeting, Jan Blunt, Communications Director, said, "To rule out or identify any air quality issue in advance of proposed building renovations, testing will be done, beginning August 8." If an issue is discovered, mitigation system could be incorporated into the renovation plans for the proposed STEM High School or completed separately to ensure the safety of these staff and students currently occupying the building. On August 27th, our local news anchor, Larry Blunt of WLOS News, reported, "Test results have come back negative for contamination of oil at Bunkham County Schools headquarters." In actuality, there is contamination at the Bunkham County Schools headquarters, although not publicized, un genuine sinuses this time of year. On January 27th, testing results from three other monitoring wells on the property indicated contamination was present. These results conducted by the Department of Environmental and Natural Resources and Pace Analytical Services indicated all three wells were well above the state, what the state defines as safe contaminant levels, that being five parts per billion. Well number 15, results indicated 320 parts per billion of TCS contaminants. This board voted to do independent study of the hazardous waste contamination of BCS Central Office property. To study is to pursue knowledge. To do justice by your words and your vote, you have an obligation to acknowledge all findings. The volatile compound TCE is present at high levels. To what degree you mitigate will depend on whether you truly seek information, including things like the plumbing effects of these contaminants and results of air contamination sampling. As things stand, it appears you did not vote to study the hazardous waste contamination of the BCS property. To the contrary, you voted to study how to kill the messenger, Mrs. Baldwin, and how to bury the facts. You are not a corporation protecting its interests. You are elected officials.
Thank you, Ms. Humphries.
Pursue knowledge and err on the side of safety for those who work here, those who visit here.
Ms. Humphries, thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm a little nervous, too. I'm not supposed to. Glad to see scouts out. Maybe they'll learn something tonight. Mom's silent in the middle of the meeting. It's a good thing, too. I did though, what Ms. Humphries just said. She is backed it up with facts and I've even got more facts. And we'll deal with that issue later. If you want transparency on this board and if you want real news, I'm going to ask you to do something tonight. Go in closed session after this meeting and take out the Communication Director here at Bunkham County where we can have straight line news from the real TV 13, because we are not getting it. Now, if you call it a conflict of interest, your lawyer might call it something else. He does not represent this board. He represents this whole county. This is an absolute conflict of interest to have a person of this district in this debate.
Mr. Rice, this board, this board does not take personnel criticisms in open session. You've been to our meetings, Mr. Rice, longer than anybody else in the room and you know that. So I'll please ask you not to criticize employees in public session. You can direct your criticisms to the superintendent. There's ways to talk to the board in closed session and you know that. So please, if you would adhere to the policy we've always had, sir, I would appreciate it.
Oh, thank you very much. What Ben said, I won't take back. Now, when we talked about dropout, Irwin High School had headlines this big across the newspaper back a few years ago. I brought it to the county commissioners, you knew all this, board, before this superintendent come on board, about the dropout rate. It soared and it soared for 30 years the same way. Now, we've got the initiative in mind. Now, we're saying we're really hitting the high spots and doing well. You ain't doing any better than you did before. I told the county commissioners and I told this board, the only way that you're going to do better is to have a policy change. When the superintendent of Public Instruction took the policy change to the state level, it took the dropout rate down. Then the initiative came in. We are still suffering for the dropout rate. Now, I want you to compare numbers, like Clinton said last night on the news. You need to go to the arithmetic. Today, we've got 25,600-some kids. In 1979, or thereabout, you can check the figure, we had 27,600-some kids, over 2,000 more. So I'd like for you to figure how we built all these new schools and done all the work we have.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Thank you, sir.
Give me just a second, like you did the other dropout.
They gave everybody the same amount of time.
He took part of mine.
No, I stopped the clock.
You did?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Yep. I'll continue to, next time.
Ms. Blunt, I'm sorry, what was the name?
Kristen Carter.
Kristen Carter? Don't see her.
Apparently, I'm here to give a, a different side of the free breakfast. I wrote it down so I don't get nervous and ramble. I'm a stepparent of a freshman at AC Reynolds High School. My husband has MS. He's paraplegic, legally blind and suffers from chronic cognitive disease. He has disability insurance and that helps with some, but not all of his expenses. With my husband's disability income, his children qualify for the reduced lunch program. I would imagine, even including my income, if medical expenses were taken into consideration, we would still qualify. I made a decision this year to forego applying for the reduced lunch, given the state of the economy and the cutbacks happening everywhere. I feel that even though I may be able to get a break, it's my duty as a productive citizen of Asheville to do my part, however small it may be, to help my country towards a path of debt reduction. I am telling you this so that you all might understand where my frustration comes from when I learn all high school students, and I recently found out, Haug Creek Elementary also, are being offered free breakfast. Don't get me wrong. When there is a child that is not getting enough food, it is our responsibility to help provide. I would prefer it to be a community effort instead of through the government, but that's another discussion in itself. All children are not starving. My stepkids eat breakfast every morning before school. However, if you put free food in front of a child, especially if it's what my stepdaughter...